Okay.
Dr. Plutch, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley?
Here.
Trusty McFuddrich?
Here.
Trusty Trombley?
Here.
Trusty Garrick?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here. I know that somebody just has minutes. Need to motion to approve the minutes of July 10th, 2017.
So moved.
About a second?
Second.
Okay. Give you a few minutes, minute or two, looking over whatever you need.
You probably couldn't hear it. Did you hear it?
It's okay.
My perusing is that it's okay.
Looks good.
All those in favor of approval signify the same thing.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period from four members of the community. Send the report from Cozoff.
Not much, really not much to reports, same old thing, trash, grass, there's no new businesses, we haven't any zoning board meetings, so about it really.
Where have you sent out letters on grass? Is there a way to give us like a summary of those so that if we see things that...
I send out notices of violation, most of the times I call them. I'm dealing with a lot of banks, property management companies is the biggest ones, and now they're switching where the ones you were dealing with no longer take care of the same property, so now it's a game to try and find out who the new property management companies are. The only way I can, that I have to get that information is generally through the assessors, and he's been out, so.
Have you dealt with one on Oak Street? There's one on Oak Street that's gotten really, really real bad.
Which one?
Seventy-five.
They were talking about that, I noticed that last week. I mean, I can't figure these people out, they cut their grass early in the spring this time of year, they all give up on it. I mean, the grass grows every week.
The way it's been raining.
There's brush down earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems, it just seems to be a lot more yards that weren't an issue, you know, walking around this weekend with the Village Fest and everything.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
Yeah, I saw that last week that there were some that I hadn't seen in the past that weren't an issue in the past.
Right.
But now they are. Couple of them were, like I say, property management, which I called, you know, the people I was dealing with before, only to be told that we no longer service that account, so trying to figure out who owns them now.
And they don't tell you who they sold it to?
No, they try to, but it's, they never have any names or numbers, and they're not going to divulge that. It's a game they play. So. Then there's been some junk issues around, illegal apartments, dealt with that.
Were you checking on that this week with the sheriff?
I checked on it last week, I did talk to her, and they're supposed to have that all cleaned up by this week, I didn't get a chance to go by there today, but...
But we also thought that there was nobody in that garage, but there's, I took a call over the weekend, there's people in and out of there all the time.
In the garage still?
Garage, yes.
Okay.
And they started attempts to renovate it.
Well, I was in the garage, it's, whatever they did in there has been done, I mean, the sheetrock is up and whatnot, it's just that it's an illegal living space.
Yeah.
And they've been told, so next, next call is to the sheriff. Then my favorite people on South Street, they moved the trailer, now it's behind the garage, so, you know, this is, it never ends.
Still in our store.
The trailer's got to go, it's junk, along with the rest of the junk around there, and I explained a lot to them, but apparently they're not understanding, so...
Well, we have legal avenues, let's do that. Maybe Judge Labonte will not be so.
No, I mean, if the trailer was lovable would be one thing, but the trailer's junk, it was junk when they brought it there, they had two weeks to renovate and get it the hell out, it's still there, it's, summer's over with, and now they moved it behind the garage, so, you know.
Bite your tongue, summer is not over.
You have no idea how frustrating it is dealing with this day in and day out.
I know, summer just started, yeah.
How about this lot on Cedar Street, what's this about?
Lot on Cedar Street?
Is there a research lot on Cedar Street Route 9, possible subdivision?
Oh, that's in conjunction with the lot on Route 9 here. There was an application for a building permit I had to deny because it needs zoning board approval, and part of it, they were going to claim some of that lot, but the people in the back want to claim some of it, they were going to subdivide a part of it, this was two months ago, month and a half, I haven't heard anything, so I did all the footwork for them for it.
Which lot is that?
It's the one that was owned by, well, Khan is the one on this side, but the one in the back there was Luke Wyler, the greenhouses, well, no, not that lot, the lot where the mechanic's in is, part of that building is on this lot over here, so...
Francis Tate?
Yeah.
I saw in the paper where that, that transaction with Khan's property, that's listed as one owner.
Well, maybe it is now, but at one time it was going to be two.
Are you referring to the property where the hotel was?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that one there, then the lot behind it.
Where mechanic's in.
Where mechanic's in, part of that building is on this lot over here, so...
Because there was an issue with the parking.
Right.
But it was listed in the, in the real estate transactions as one, just one owner was named.
Oh, well, maybe they settled it and said who's going to own it.
Still coming from the county, but just the one. Okay, more questions for me?
Where's the new restaurant, assigned permit for new restaurant?
Oh, the Chinese restaurant, it's going to be a Chinese restaurant again.
New owners?
Who knows?
I think so.
The new sign.
Okay.
We'll just have to keep looking at the storage area.
Yeah.
And were you looking at these properties, the grass issues we talked about? Thank you.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the August Village Board meeting. Village Fest this past weekend was, despite the weather, a very enjoyable experience for our residents and visitors. We managed to scoop a lot of ice cream, had many enjoyable conversations and seeing folks we had not seen for a while, and enjoyed the exhibitions. We would like to send out a huge thank you to Stewart's in Russell Point for again supplying the ice cream and supplies, that always makes this day such an enjoyable experience for all who attend. A big thank you goes out to Kenny Drugs for their bottled water, which came in very handy, that is always welcomed. Without these generous sponsors, this event would be very difficult to have for our residents and visitors. Congratulations also go out to the Champlain Telephone Company for their successful open house, and the planners of the townwide garage sale for their continued efforts. We would also like to extend a big thanks to the U.S. Border Patrol and Officer Chad Dami for his participation and display. Dedded gratitude goes out to the Champlain Fire Department and the Champlain EMS who gave tours of their equipment, educational materials to the children attending. I'd like to also thank Nikki Malinsky and Tricia Ry for their children's activities, I don't know if you've, if you saw it, but that was kind of a neat little mini, mini butt golf course there that they had. Bill Ry for offering to take people out in the boats, the Sheriff Department for their participation again this year, helping with the 5K race, which was ultimately rained out, but nonetheless offered to stay and provide any, any help that they could, which was, which was a nice gesture. I'd like to thank Juanita and Mary for all their planning, phone calls, and coordinating this event, without the two of them, this would be really difficult to handle. And a personal thank you to the crew who cooked and served everyone, working at the fest, your help is always appreciated. The Village DPW crew who also set up before and cleaned up after the event deserve a sincere thank you as well, Michael, thank you. Also, I'd like to say thanks to the Village Board members who helped make the day a success, thank you, despite the weather, it was a very good day for the village. That was the upside of this report. It is with a feeling of anger, disappointment, and frustration that as you no doubt have seen, the water project has not been completed in time as promised. I am extremely disappointed with the construction company hired to complete this shared project, their lack of commitment, their ability to follow through on promises, and to get the job completed is just overwhelming. We are exploring other avenues to force completion, looking at our legal options in any way possible to see this project to its end. As always, both the Village Board and the Town Board will continue to work together to see this project completed to our shared satisfaction. Right now, we don't need to set an extra plate at our Thanksgiving table, but that may happen. Some good news on the waterfront, the water softening plant, construction is moving along at a very good rate with filtration components being installed, along with new well pumps and electrical services. Often, on a job like this, the construction company and its personnel make all the difference. I'd like to thank Luck Brothers Construction for the excellent job that they're doing at that water plant. Contrary to much of this report, there is much, there is much we should all be thankful for, thank you for your time. That's only half my frustrations, not even a tincture my frustrations.
Tell us how you really feel.
Pardon?
Tell us how you really feel.
Turn that camera off. All right, who would like to go next? Thanks for volunteering, Tom.
It's whoever you make eye contact with.
Yeah, I really don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
Okay. Proceed, McFuddrich.
I just have a couple of things, I also would just like to say a few thank yous. First of all, the porch music yesterday was a lot of fun, great music, so I'd like to thank Roger Andrews and Natalie Jubert for performing, and sincerely thank the Garricks and the Connors for their porches. What a beautiful day we got, surprisingly, it was, it was absolutely perfect, the music was wonderful, the porches were great, the setting, it was, I think it was really, really good. And as, talking about music, we should thank Mary McCaffrey and her friends for performing a couple of weeks ago, and we should thank the VFW for using their trailer again. And as the mayor said, Nikki Malinsky and Tricia Ry have just been invaluable in all of the kids' activities, the story hour, they do so much for the village activities, and I personally thank them. There's a concert next Sunday in Bill Earl Park with the Wager Brothers, should be an excellent concert, and I'd like everyone to come. And the only other thing is that I am setting up some author visits, Champlain Author Series, we call it, and the first one is with a woman named Emily Selick, and she will be speaking on August 28th at the Meeting House at 4:00 PM. Everything else is moving along with the farmer's market and the kids' runs and everything, so enough said, thank you.
So, response has been very successful.
It has been very successful.
Sure, that's been great.
Yeah.
Okay, true.
Oh, well, it's too bad that we couldn't have had the weather on Saturday that we had on Sunday because it was, it was gorgeous, and as always, it was, it was fun scooping ice cream, and I managed to keep it to an absolute minimal of drooling all over my pants.
Just drooling everywhere.
Yeah, you know, I'm not able to, basically. And unfortunately, we missed the porch series yesterday, but, and I, I share Mayor Martin's frustration with the, the lack of responsibility being taken by this construction company with getting this project completed, and not even a week or two overdue, but months overdue, and basically leaving our village residents hanging, and town residents hanging, and it's, it's very discouraging, and it's very discouraging when you talk with people and they're frustrated because their properties are still torn up, and, you know, they looked at, you know, a backhoe in their front yard for weeks, and it's discouraging, but, like you said, on the flip side, I'm very glad that we have Luck Brothers doing the softing plant, their integrity and their workmanship is unsurpassed, so...
Work ethic.
Work ethic, so...
Gov. note.
Yes.
Well, we run into a couple of problems, I'm kind of suspect of whether the storage tank that didn't be shipped back because it was damaged.
But that is not the construction company's fault, and good call on the run on Saturday.
But that was the last lightning and bolt, I mean, bolt of lightning and thunder that we heard.
I know, but the timing, I just finished my sentence, it was like, period, and then boom! And it's canceled.
The sheriff is there all in the phone, what's going on?
Well, Tom told us, but we're coming from the wall.
Yeah, it was a bad storm, that's like the formula, I mean, she was just getting down, there's no able to go around it.
But all in all, Saturday was a, was a very fun day, and I hope the village residents enjoyed it.
Mary.
So, the activity in the park had another week last week, and that went well, and what's good is a couple families have continued with the taekwondo, so that's the whole goal of this project, is to get people moving and keep it continued, so that's really nice to see that that is, has been productive. We will be doing the horseshoe pits in the coming couple of weeks here, and get that done down in Villa Earl Park, and got lots of really good feedback at the Village Fest and at the music on the porch and people talking with us, a lot of compliments to everybody in the village as a whole, and how our community comes together, you know, that resounding theme that we hear over and over again, which is so true, you know, you look at these other places in our country, and we really live in an incredible place, and we're truly blessed to have that.
Yeah, fortunate to be here.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. There were a couple suggestions, one this weekend at the farmer's market, request for more visible signs so people coming on the road either way, seeing that to get a little bit more traffic for them, but that's been going very well, and it's nice to have that rate in our village, and there was a suggestion, a couple people said something about maybe moving our Village Fest to the other park, and of course, maybe as we transform that park, but it's got the pavilion there, you know, you've got the coverage, other things for kids to do, maybe would draw even more families, because the time and energy that the girls put in, that putt-putt golf game was incredible, that they had put together and all the things that they had, and that being said, someone else suggested that maybe we should go back to not having it on the same day as Champlain Telephone because they've got the music, their entertainment, the, people eat there, and then families tend to leave because they're tired of doing things with the kids at that point, and maybe more families would come if we went back to having it our own day. So I said that I would mention it at, at the meeting, they were suggestions, but a lot of just really great feedback and appreciation for everything that is, is being done within the village. Good, good to hear.
Can I add one comment to the farmer's market? I know I had mentioned before that I had gotten a gift card from the health department, and they've been following up religiously to, you still haven't spent your gift card, you still haven't spent your gift card, so I had a very nice conversation with, is it Jim?
Yep.
When I went in and, you know, I, when I talked to the lady from the health department again, I will be, I told her I was saving mine to use it in Champlain, use it at our own farmer's market, so I'll use it at the farmer's market with the health department too, because they were, they want people using them.
Yeah, promoting healthy eating.
Absolutely, so, everything I got there went home and went into the compartment to be used.
Great, great.
All right, thank you. Want to do the transfers, one here?
Everybody's got their expense and revenue report for July. That's it, you win! You are correct. Of course, there probably is no questions anyway because it's the beginning of our year.
Yeah. Oh, it's good.
We do have one transfer to do. Yeah, we do have one transfer to do because we did have money in our reserves for the repairs, and that's for the repair of Ashline Drive for the new water line. We have to transfer from F-882, which is a reserve for repair, thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars to F-8310.2, which is the water project.
That is the, that is the amount that we were given, we approved, thirty-three thousand something, we still have not been built for...
Testing and, pressure testing and chlorination, but that's for the Ashline Drive extension, all the piping, hydrant, what's there.
Still should not exceed, but we have approved.
Well, it may, because it was in that bill, I think it was twenty-nine hundred dollars exploratory, I'm thinking.
I thought that that was down to one hour.
I'm pretty sure it's twenty-nine hundred.
Yeah, I saw that too.
So, maybe twenty-nine hundred more than what you originally anticipated, but you'll know when the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Is it, is it constructional? Yeah, it's not, it was just not in service because it didn't pressure test your funding to get... What about?
See, it's not working.
Have you done? No, I don't think it's been touched or understeated.
No.
Yeah, it's twenty-nine hundred.
Not, that's part of, you see, it says zero on the back, we haven't did that part yet. The asphalt will probably do this week, or some of the asphalt will be there, so road crossings, I don't know. That's the first, that's the first car asphalt. Road crossings, and driveways, so on.
Wasn't twenty-nine hundred included in this three thousand?
Yeah, it is, but when you're original, the balance you're going to have for the next time?
Yeah.
It's probably going to be twenty-nine hundred more than what you originally approved way back because that was an add-on because the, the line wasn't where it's supposed to be, and we dug it, we found it next to it, so...
My understanding of that was that it was only going to get paid one hour of explanation, exploration.
They get paid, well, I don't know, per cubic yard, fifty bucks a cubic yard, and they estimate it's fifty a cubic yard, so that's how that came up.
Okay. Especially when we had to find the block. All right, need to motion to approve the transfer. About a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Well, yeah, so you might just have to ask the question, so, I mean, I understand that we, we owe this portion, but why the heck would we pay it when they're not completing their work? Why not hold out a chunk instead of us continuing to pay?
Because that part is complete, you have, you've got so many days of paying for it, that part of it's complete.
And there's nothing wrong with this part at all, it's one hundred percent complete. No, you said that they haven't done the testing.
The restoration.
The pressure testing and the chlorination.
We're not charged for that yet.
But we haven't been charged for that yet, the only thing we get charged for is what was put in the ground, the piping, the excavation.
But there is a...
The whole project goes that way, you know, and when they put the pipe down, that when they measure it up, and that won't get paid for, and then they pay back after the chlorination, the pressure testing, and they get paid separate for that, it's all line items.
Right, so, but all of this restoration stuff that's not being completed, and the messes that they're leaving everywhere, where does that fit in?
That, we'll get charged for that when they complete it, that'll be on here too, we're supposed to be able to put in whatever it was for the footage, we'll pay that when that's complete. What we're paying for right now is just what they have done.
Right, but what I'm saying is, how much is that going to be? Is it enough of an incentive for them to come and finish this? I mean, that's what I'm saying, you know?
The whole project's like that.
Exactly, it's not.
I mean, the whole project's like, drainage, but...
I mean, who pays any contractor before the job is one hundred percent complete?
Well, this is considered substantial, but when a line is in, you've got to pay it for it, the material for the, that's not a whole job.
Contract is written, but there's been...
You've got so many days to pay it.
There's been a significant amount of money that's been withheld from this last payment to be addressed, and that will be, that will be addressed with the town's going to have an emergency board meeting, to dealing with the lawyers for...
But is it enough for them to care or just write it off?
Well, it's...
And we're going to be stuck?
It's got to be enough, we're not going to be stuck, the bond council will have to pick up whatever we don't get, we'll have to pick up and pay for the restoration, plus there, there being eighteen hundred dollars a day being withheld.
That's fine.
As a part of the, yeah, non-completion.
Well, yeah, thousand for the project and the other eight hundreds per inspector, so, thousand bucks every day that goes back to the project.
And that started as of when?
July 1st, I think this month, it was like fifty-seven thousand for the last payout, that went back to the project.
Never to be seen? I mean, are they going to get that money back if they complete?
I don't believe so, no, because it's eighteen hundred bucks a day. It's a thousand dollars for substantial, and eight hundred per inspector, and they have taken one inspector here, so it's eighteen hundred bucks a day, has been like this since July 1st.
It's just so unacceptable, yeah, okay.
Plus, we've been assured, we've been assured that the bonding agency will pick up the rest, so even if they decide that they're going to pack up and leave, this will be, there will be funds available to get this job done.
The bonding company's in church.
And then are we allowed to let the Attorney General's office know of the whole...
They are also the...
Kit and caboodle so that someone else doesn't get stuck with this company?
The town's attorney will be in contact with the Attorney General.
This company should be put out of business.
As we were with the bond counsel last week.
They change names and they reappear.
Oh, I know.
And that's what they've been doing.
Now, will we be able to hire our own contractor to finish?
If the bonding company will have to hire it because they've got to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Will we have any say? Will we have any say in it? I mean, I'm, I.
Probably very little, they'll put it out of bid.
As long as it's done, I mean, as long as it's done correctly, they're, they're gonna be the ones paying for it, the bonding company. But I don't think it will go that far because it's hard to get bonded. He loses bonding.
He's gonna lose his ability to bid.
Well, I would certainly hope that he's not going to bid to finish the project. He's getting going. Don't think that's a lot. I don't think so.
This is to bid on other contracts.
I know.
Because other contracts, he has to be bonded. The company has to be bonded to complete, even start a project.
My, and the reason why I asked this is because we had no say in the contractor that was awarded the bid, which we all know how that was gonna go from all the different things that occurred. My concern is, you know, we are very visible within this village with our residents and they have no hesitation and they, and they shouldn't of voicing their opinions about how unhappy they are about things. So I would hope that we could have a little bit of say in, in.
I don't have it as bad as, as Mr. Barkum has it at the town, but it's, uh.
I just hope that we get a little bit of say in, in whoever may, um, come in to finish this.
Yeah, have your answering machine turned on because you're gonna have calls answered the next day.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yes. But that's, I agree with you. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I understand your frustrations.
I just don't wanna see someone come in, underbid like what happened with this project and we're stuck again.
Well, the bonding, I mean, that, the bonding company's gonna pay that. And the bonding company has to keep paying the fine until this is done. So I'm sure they're gonna wanna get all the crews that get in here and get it done. If it goes that far, goes that direction.
And is, does the bonding company cover if there's any injury for these areas that are not fixed and left in disrepair if someone were to get hurt?
I'm sure that their church company, their law firm.
They cover any liability.
Some of these situations make me very nervous.
Well, thank you for letting me voice my frustration.
And there is retainage. They did, they have a percentage of the retainage still held, but is it enough when it comes down to get, when all meets gone? Is there enough? Probably not when you look at, but that's the, I think about a bit of difference. You know, can you buy a taxi or a truck or something like that? It's, it's all blown out now, it's not coming in. All of, you know, so it'll be interesting.
Has been for.
The last two years.
Are you still like one hundred percent consumed with it? Or are you finding a little bit more time? Still babysitting?
No, not babysitting as much. Now we're trying to get our stuff done. We gotta finish getting our PRVs and stuff as immediately as tanks online. Still got a waste of all this work, there's a relief, but it's definitely getting closer.
Getting those, getting those tanks online is, is just a huge part of this. Because we gotta flush the, flush the hydrants. We're getting complaints about some discolor, discoloration and get the lines or get the tanks filled, we got more pressure. The water's flowing in different directions now because of the way the hole's set up.
It's not flowing the same way. So a lot of your scale will, will layer in a certain direction, so it's. Now we changed all those directions with these pressure valves. Like here, the water flows, can flow in, it can't flow back. So now where it used to pass through the village and go up through, it can't, it's gotta go all the way around. So everything can flow into the bowl, but it can't flow out. So it changes and now you start flaking stuff off and you're getting, you know, things that change. Flooding levels change here and there, there's a lot of things that change. So we're, we're working on getting a new, um, flushing, um.
Procedure.
Procedure, sequence. Which I really don't wanna do until the new tanks come online because we need that extra pressure to help scrub those lines. So that's, I'm hoping in the next few weeks here, hopefully in the next meeting you can say our tanks are online, you know, and we're, we're getting down, but it's all the, it's duffels, no doubt. But the, the everyday list gets, you know, a few shorter, so. And then we'll have a bunch more to do after, but those are inside the bowl. We can do anytime. I'm not so worried about those, it's just the ones that need the PRVs that we have to finish. So, and, and we gotta, we gotta get them done. Auto store needs to be paid. You know, we need to close out for the tank company. They've been, they've been waiting for, for some time, so.
Okay, so we've, uh, we've, uh, I don't think we voted on the, on the reserve yet.
Right, so we just need.
Okay, yeah, first, we have a second? A roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Presentation of the warrant.
Are we going to discuss?
Yes, before we approve the warrant, there's two points of discussion here.
Yes.
One is, uh, one is, uh, one is, one is both are.
We just need to do the one, the village sign.
Okay, under role business. Under role business, it's on the first page of the warrant. We're at East Shore Woodworking. We have sent the, we have sent him a check for F. Is that correct?
Yes, three sixty-nine fifty.
Okay, three sixty-nine fifty. This amount also, Scott has talked to a, uh, Scott has talked to a painter that will paint on the new sign or the, yeah, the new sign. Will paint on the new sign. Did everyone have a chance to see that picture with the boat and the river? Yes, yes, yes.
I asked, I emailed that something.
Okay, we've talked somewhat in, somewhat in, with a little bit of humor and sometimes with a little bit of seriousness about replacing that anorexic deer up there or whatever it is. And I suppose if we are going to push to improve the image of the village and what they're going to see coming into the village is signs that we have, we have looked at or we have decided to change. This would be a consideration, I believe, rather than having the village crest we have established in the date, just something to change the look of the sign. Perhaps make it a little more appealing to the eye. So I need, I'm sure you wanted, probably discussed this, but I need a, a, a need a resolution to spend a hundred and seventy-five dollars to have the painted sign.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now, we can discuss whatever you want to discuss.
Yeah.
Come on, oh, I'm sorry.
First question is, why is it five forty, four fifty paid out to him on the warrant?
We, the original bill was seven thirty-nine and we paid him half, three hundred and sixty-nine fifty. So what we did is to make him a check for whenever it's done. We paid, we added the three sixty-nine fifty plus the one seventy-five.
If we decide to go, if we decide to go with the artist.
Decide to go with it.
If not, then we don't, we have one seventy-five less, less.
Right, it'll go back to the three sixty-nine, whatever.
Fifty, yeah.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, Tom.
Go ahead.
Let me, I just feel like I should say something because I don't want anyone to think I'm pushing this, um, this particular picture. My concern is, um, just that we think of something that is attractive, that draws people into the village. I'm just, it does not have to be that photograph. I mean, I'm certainly not thinking that my photograph is the, should be the artist's view of what represents the, uh, the village.
Dog ready to move. Tishna's dog.
That's better than what went through my mind. So I'm certainly not going to be personally offended if you don't want that picture. That's what I wanted to say. And if you want the, the emblem, I mean, I, it's, it's really up to all of you. I'm just trying to think of a, you know, like, really like the word branding, but I'm trying to think of something that is attractive, that represents who we are. And I always come back to the river. And we have the boat building industry is the history and the, the river was key. And that's the only thing I can come up with. So I just wanted to say, I'm not going to be offended if you say, well, I don't really care for that picture, that photograph. It's absolutely, I will understand that. Okay, so I, I just wanted to get that out there. I didn't want anyone to think, oh, we're gonna hurt Janet's feelings if we don't want her photograph. It's fine.
What I was gonna say was, I wish, I wish, I wish we could have seen a digital view of what that space is gonna look like. Is it worth a hundred and seventy-five to go forward and do that? Because it's a small, I don't, I didn't, never measured it. I'm gonna guess a eighteen inch diameter space on a big sign. I don't know if it's worth doing or not because of being so small.
That's the reason.
Oh, I know why, no, I'm not saying it's a lot, I'm not saying that it's, the price is too much for the artist's work.
Just how is it going to look?
Because it's a small space on that big sign, is, is.
Is it gonna be lost?
I was kinda hoping it, it was some way we could have got a digital view of that, but I guess.
I was hoping that too because I sent it to Scott and then I sent it to where the artist lives because he doesn't have, I guess, a computer or something.
Right.
But I didn't get it, I didn't get that either.
Yeah.
So, can I ask, does somehow we can get a?
Or maybe you have other ideas? Or maybe you wanna take the boat out and just have it be the river with the banks on it?
I think the boat is, I think that should be part of this whole, because we did, the history of this village is, is boat making. You know, as it went. We could even, I was thinking about this this afternoon, maybe take a picture from the bridge, you know, with a person to in the boat. And I don't know if you wanna make that, that personal.
It's gonna be great if the Girl Scouts had their project done and that island was complete and have the bond boat along the finished island. That would be nice.
But he could put an island into that.
Oh, yeah, he could add anything in there if this could be hand painted. I'm not questioning, I think the picture's fine. I think, I think the river is a good description of the village because as you said, this was a, a.
That's our history.
That's our history.
It might be a better picture.
I'm just wondering if it's in the space.
You know, if we, if we took the boat out and put the rocks instead of the boat, or the dock.
No, I'm open to anything. I just think the river is key.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Takes floating down it from the earlier days.
I think, if you think about where that's gonna be, ten feet in the air, I think the boat's gonna help finish that picture off rather than just have river because I think it's gonna blend it out.
Like a blue ribbon and that's it.
What about a boat rack? A simpler.
You know, or a picture of those old boats that they built? You know, those old flat bottomed.
Black canal boats.
Black canal boats. Something like that rather than the rowboat.
Does anyone know where this came from?
I have no idea.
I have no idea.
BEC.
Just curious, that was my one thought.
Wasted disease, right?
Looks like the fines got, it's still kind of boring.
I'm not gonna look.
Sorry.
Yeah, it would be nice to do something more relevant and new, I think. Like you say, I don't know, I'm not.
Let's keep the boat, take the docks up, put some rocks in there, a few plants or whatever. See what that looks like, can we do that?
Do you wanna put this on hold and do some more research?
Can we suggest a go?
I like the picture of the river and the boat. If you wanna keep the rowboats. Take the docks up, put some rocks in there. You know, instead just give it a more nature scene, if you will. And have the boat tied up to the, you know, in that area.
And provide a little work photo.
Or if the guy can, if the guy can put some rocks or plants or stuff like that in there along the shore, you know, a little shoreline, some rocks longer in the boat, I'm sure he could probably paint that in. But I would like to see something.
I wanna keep that.
Well, you're the negative vote then.
What would be anything different, right?
Well.
I'm gonna think the log boat's a great idea.
Well, I, I'm gonna play Amy for a change. I, I'm glad we're having the sign repaired. My concern is, I don't wanna spend an extra hundred and seventy-five dollars if in a year or so, we're gonna be looking at new sign.
Oh, no.
Because I know that we had, there was discussion at some point about getting different signs put in around the village and I just don't wanna spend extra money on something that.
Oh, no.
Possibly in a year from now is gonna be taken out and replaced.
I thought this sign would be the beginning of the new look.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And that any future signs. Could be not the same as this, but it would be a different format. Welcome to the village or whatever.
Now, this, so in other words, this one will remain where, where it is.
Right.
And we'll try to do others in another area.
Other gateways.
Okay. I just, I, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I think, I don't think the price is that bad to make change. I'm hoping the space is big enough, so it'd be.
So what will end up with, I'm sure.
So if, if you'd like, what I was gonna suggest is that we approve it. I have to get around this point for one, I talked to Scott to see if there's some way he could give us some sort of feeling on, on what that size is gonna look like. Is it, does it gonna look, I think it might look better. I wanna think about it, I think it's an eighteen inch diameter at least.
Well, if we want something bigger when he, when he does this, when he does the reworking on the sign, can he make that space bigger?
I don't think so.
No, because it's like circular.
Yeah.
So he couldn't really go, it would be off if he went low.
Yeah, I got a picture over here. I, I don't believe so, Greg. I think if we're gonna put anything on there, that's the only space we've got available. Yeah, see, it's. It's a pretty good size. If you look at the picture, it gives me reassurance it might be all right.
Yeah, I think that's a good size. That's, that's much bigger than I think, if you inches.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's probably larger than I remember it.
I'll book that at a motion.
I think that'd be funny. And so bring the total bill to what, like, close to nine?
Well, we still owe like three fifty.
Nine hundred and fourteen. Yeah, I thought you were just gonna say ass and.
It's a pretty good size. I think it, I think it'll be fine. So, I think I'm leaning towards it, I, I'm fine with that.
Any thoughts?
No, I'm good, I'm, I think it's great, good idea.
Yeah, I just, I don't wanna spend more than a hundred and seventy-five dollars on the painting. If he's gonna rework it and do something different and say, well, now it's going to be, then I'm not in favor of it. I, I will, I will agree to spending the additional hundred and seventy-five, but I'm not in agreement with spending more than that.
Yeah, is everybody okay with deciding to go ahead and get it done? I don't wanna hold it up any longer with, with more research and.
Well, he's waiting for reply too.
You're all set with this?
Yeah.
Right.
Are we gonna keep the boat in the dock?
I think the picture was fine.
Yeah.
I mean, logically, it should be attached to something, not a rock. So unless we wanna make the boat more out in the river, I don't know if it makes sense to have the.
Just a plain boat out there, no? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I've got pictures of it with people in it, but I think that's too detailed for that space. I don't think you would want that.
Well, and somebody might not be happy about having the picture.
I think our dock is lovely.
Yes, it makes for a good job with it.
Yes.
All right, so if we're all in, uh, if we're all okay with this, roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
All right. Second thing is, I need a resolution to approve the expenditure of three hundred dollars for the Wager Brothers performance.
That's the band that's coming in on, on, um, Sunday. That's the only one that we paid anything for this year.
And that's coming out of the, where is that coming from?
The seventy-nine eighty-nine point four, that's out of the.
Village Fest or.
In the village fest one.
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Amy. How long do they play?
Two hours.
Two hours.
Four to six.
And it's Sunday, the.
This coming Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
This coming Sunday.
And if it rains?
I don't know.
Probably almost guaranteed lately, the way the things are.
Just have to reschedule.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, yep. The first and the second, a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, motion to approve the warrant.
Okay, we have additional invoices of seventy-five dollars for a total warrant of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars and seventy cents.
I make a motion that we approve the warrant with the additional seventy-five dollars.
One second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Those who are looking under water fund, box product, equipment and service, that is the chlorine that is in the water. Need to be repaired. But it's a, I think a valuable piece of equipment because it helps monitor the chlorine levels further away.
That's been much better with that in play.
Yeah.
Lot less of the circumstances where you smell like a swimming pool in the house.
Uh, St. Alvin's is changing now with the change of flow.
And most of the UJ Prescott stuff will be reimbursed. Is that correct? So that takes a significant amount of money out of here. Okay, any further discussion?
Trusty Trembling.
Aye.
Trusty McFettrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trembling.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
All right. All right, correspondence.
No, how about Mike?
Nah.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't do a report anyway.
Sorry, Mike.
You got any questions for me?
Course yours.
I didn't do a report this month. We're still working on the water meters, chasing the water project, the equipment. Softening equipment is in, well, softening equipment's been delivered. They put the green sand, they fastened down today. They have to do the electrical and plumbing. Right now, the building is all, the brick and everything is on the outside as far as the shell. The equipment's in, the floor's painted. They've got the, right now they're working on electrical, all the heating lines is what they're working on now. We are waiting for a fifteen hundred gallon tank that was delivered that was damaged before it was skidded and sent. Because it was, it was a cotton, it was underneath the steel beams that they, when factory sent it, so obviously there's damage. So that's gonna be, that may hold us up a little bit. They're waiting for stuff for the lift station, some pumps, the flight pumps for the lift station. They can't start any defiltration until loads are in, so they can pump water out, obviously. I'm not sure, I don't remember the delivery date, but it's gonna, they may push it out at least a few more weeks, more than we anticipated. But that's still going forward, so I assume, I'm assuming probably beginning of October. Probably start up somewhere near for the softening plant as of right now. The gas line is in and tied in across the street. We did the cut out of the road. All I have to do is go from the end, tie it into the building. I wanna get that done when they're, all done, their groundwork minus the pond. This is a retention pond going around the building. And also the, we had to dig, we had to cut the road out. Lux actually helped us. It was an old cement box cover. That was across the road and, and one of the dump trucks, Mean's dump trucks had broke through it. We had put a pipe in it, put flowable fill, and that bracing inside there had shifted and it floated the pipe. And it was hardened into the pipe with it, so we had to cut the whole road out and take it out. There was a piece of, actually the old, the old bridge. X bracing was the top, it cemented, I don't know if they use for cement, but had to use their big machine excavator to help break it up and get it out. So that's been fixed. Right now, we're, we're still working on meters. Once we can get the meters done. The next thing for us is gonna be flushing. We're overdue for flushing and we really wanted the higher pressures to, to clean these lines. As far as, other than that, as far as the project, ash line needs to be pressure tested and chlorinated, that can be opened. All the rest of the lines are open, minus, they're doing a border right now for V line and a couple services there. A Derringer service at the end, and then they have to do a tie-in on the east service road. They have to tie both ends in so we can keep water to the border. And get rid of a, a, a old section of piping in between where it used to be, it was a gray area. The border would take care of, but duty free was fed off from there. Now we have a new line that they're tapped off from. So we can serve them, we'll have a valve at the end that we can shut off if the border needs to be shut off as far as if they have breaks or whatever. But that's what we are as far as the piping goes. Other than that, it's been, whatever comes up, the day that changes. So just take it as it comes and, and go from there.
It's been a long haul.
Yeah, it's getting closer though now. At least there's light, you know, you can start to see the end of, the end, start to see the end coming. So I had to order some extra parts too, with all the stuff that we had. I remember when we started to skids and skids of stuff of material meters and fittings. And it's getting, it's getting depleted. I mean, it's getting, plus there's also a few extra services. Mickey's been working with the town, they've been putting in on a dual road, so been trying to help them, meters in and whatnot. I think they've got, I don't know, eight, eight or ten, something like that. New services on top of this project, so.
How many PRVs do you have left before you can charge your tanks?
Probably, I'd say maybe like fifteen, probably somewhere in there. I mean, cause some of them I had listed, like I had senior housing listed. Well, we had six to do there with you on the unit, so I had listed before as, you know, and I addressed them, but actually there was six of them. You know, I've got like the shop, which is, you know, steam trenches and some of these are, I've got a few houses that wanna do some piping. These are where they're having, they're not a good spot, so, but we'll, we'll get them finished. If we can get a couple done a day, I'm tough ones, if we can tackle two a day, you know, I figure in a couple of weeks we can have them done. There's a few more added in there that I don't have, you know, I'm still waiting for fittings, for like for right A to tie to the well line. Well, I'm gonna have to get that one in, cause that one's already tied to the well line. There's a few of those on Charlie's end that, he just hooked up on the South Street. I gotta put that one in, cause that one for sure, right now they're in the seventy pound range on that end. So there's a few of them that, that'll be added on to that list, but I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that next May I can sit here and say. You know, our tanks are online, our flushing's done, or in progress, and then we'll still have some meters to put in. But those we can just keep picking at after because they're inside the boat.
Right.
So.
Right.
The biggest thing for us is gonna be, is getting that, is getting the sequence as far as flushing, cause it's all changed. It's gonna be, and we're really gonna think about it now. If we do have a, a, a break as far as isolating a section. Because the water's directional, how it moves results, so if you shut off a certain area, you maybe, or, 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 you think you're isolating a certain area. You may be shutting off somebody else, so it really has changed a lot. But we'll keep, just keep picking at it and we'll see what happens. When these comes, when everything comes online, we'll find out where the weak spots are and just take them as they come and take care of them. Yeah, that's all we can do, so. I mean, all in all, it's, it's a good thing. It's just a lot of, a lot of stress and headaches in between, you know, it's the way it is. And I do feel for a lot of these people that, you know, if I was in their shoes, I'd feel the same way, upset, and I don't, you know, you gotta listen to them. And I understand, I, I understand exactly what they're going through, but the hard thing for us now is we can't, we can't tell needs and methods. You, you, it's gotten so, you hate to make a promise to anybody because they tell you, the contractor tells you this is when it's gonna be done. And then if you make that promise, they don't even do it, so it's, you, you, you don't wanna lose that, that, that trust. You have the trust between, that's what I was trying to say, you know, sometimes it's not your fault, as much as you'd like to do what you can to. Sometimes it's just not, just can't do it, you know, unfortunately. You try, but when you gotta rely on somebody else, sometimes it doesn't always work. So, and we're all in that same, you know, all in that same boat as far as that goes. So, other than that.
Questions?
Keep going.
It'll be done soon.
Yeah, it's getting there.
Thanks, Mike.
Maybe next month I'll have a board for you.
Okay, that was a good board as well.
Correspondence from Clem County Treasurer with second quarter tax revenue. Correspondence from Northern Housing with payment in lieu of taxes. J C O monthly report, and correspondence from Thomas and Romain regarding litigation.
We would like to, we would like to thank Northern Housing Development for their generous donation as they do every year. And I did not vote for it either, I'll have you know that. I was abstent.
Say, you didn't vote against it, right?
No. No, I'm not gonna vote against the gift horse.
What does that get deposited?
Into our, in lieu of taxes.
The bank.
To the bank.
All right, any discussion on your correspondence? Okay. The business, we've had a very generous offer from Dr. John, who has, well, I'll read you his note. He's very concerned with the kids on the, on the bikes not wearing helmets. With boards, okay. He would be willing to supply funds for bike helmets for kids that need them. Please mention it at the next board meeting. Would provide, would provide instruction on wearing them correctly, bike safety, et cetera. I think this is a very generous offer with the board's approval. We can have a sign up here, we can put the sign up on Facebook. We can put the sign up on the village page, have the sign up here in the village. Kids come in, parents come in or whomever, sign up for a free helmet, and then once we find out how much. Then we can pass this on to Dr. John and go from there. I think it's a very generous offer in his part, and I agree with him. I sat on my porch on Church Street. There's only two kids that I see that ride by that have helmet time.
Yeah.
And there was a case about a week ago where two kids were coming down, they decided to get, they got a little too close to one another. And they hit, went over the handlebars, and the girl fortunately was not hurt. She was banged up, but she, and the, I think it's her brother, the guy who was with her was banged up as well. Fortunately, they were both okay, walked away, but could've very well just hit their heads on the curb and stayed there. So with the board's approval, accept the second.
Yeah, Dr. John stopped me on the, on my walk in the morning and talked to me about it. In his words, you can give a broken arm or a broken leg, but concussions are serious and he's really concerned about it.
It's a very generous offer.
Does the, does the county or the sheriff's office?
I think it's the DA's office. They just have one in Plattsburgh. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a, a project that DA Wiley does.
There's also programmed through CBPH.
Yeah, and they will come up and do the, the fitting and all the instructions and stuff.
Send them a message.
Yeah, they have, they have a very large one in Plattsburgh.
Okay.
So either, you know, either way, I don't know if we wanna get them involved or just do it on our own, but I'm for it.
Well, I think we can.
We could probably get them to come up.
We can get the word out, but we can also get them to come up and, and do the safety issues, fittings and safety issues. Once you have an idea of the numbers that we need, pass that on, get them, and I'm sure Dr. John will take care of us.
Be nice to do, I seen this story and I don't know where I saw it, my nose is getting late, but it reminded me. On NBC, most likely, you know, there are feel-good stories at the end. Where this guy had a clinic and kids brought their bikes so that they could be inspected and fixed and repaired. And we just got people from within the community that know how to do different parts of it. And if we did like a whole big bike clinic safety thing, you know, maybe obviously not this year, but maybe something to kick off for the spring.
Travel rodeo or something.
Next year, might be something to look into.
And then incorporate this into it again, is it?
Yeah.
Like do it now, but then.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think doing it once is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think people really understand the gravity of a head injury, you know. Obviously, we, we know personally what traumatic brain injuries do. And we were very lucky with George, who did have a helmet on once, and he flew over the handlebars from sand on the road. And his tooth flew from his mouth, but had he not had that helmet on, I mean, can you imagine? The force was so strong to lose a permanent tooth. It's really scary and it's, it's worth a fight with your children to put the helmets on and you can get them anywhere. It's, it's not really even an expense because people will give them to you, you, you know. But I think that's great that Dr. Southwick is willing to do that, and we should, you know, definitely support that.
Yes.
Second order under, through business, it's just an awareness thing, the beginning, August nineteenth of this year, two thousand seventeen. You must begin dialing with the area code. A new overload, overlaid, excuse me.
It's because of an overload.
With the eight-three-eight, eight-three-eight area code, superimpose it over the geographical five-one-eight area. Eastern, South, East, New York City communities such as Albany, Plattsburgh, Lake Placid, and Saratoga. You're gonna get a polite message the first time you try this, and don't add to your A code.
And then it won't be polite?
I'm not sure it's gonna be polite, but.
Listen, I only died just to be in the toilet.
You'll get tired of hearing it, no doubt. So go through your cell phones, your answering, answering devices. All of those things and make sure that the five-one-eight area code and the eight-three-eight area code, if that is what you were given. Is on there so that you can make the calls. You don't need to dial one first, just the area, ten digits. All right, if you have any more questions on that, telephone company's available. It's that type of year, or time of year again, the Potsdam Local Government Conference. It's always been very beneficial in the past to go up there, spend the day, go to the classes, see what's new, see what's different. I think we've all been there, we've all enjoyed the classes, I think. It's coming up, October tenth. Mary, do you have any idea of a number?
I don't know.
Okay, the planning board is what, six, five?
I think total, it's total of fifteen between all of them.
Fifteen and sixteen, seventeen?
There are some duplicates.
Okay, so let's, let's plan on offering it to seventeen people, need board approval to spend up to that amount.
I make a motion. It is a very worthwhile training.
And the cost is, Mary?
Seventy, potentially seven hundred each time, if everyone wants.
Okay, so we can, the motion is to spend up to that amount, early registration is forty dollars. After September twenty-ninth is fifty.
Register early.
Okay, so up to six eighty?
And that includes the board as well?
Yes, that includes the board as well.
The coffee at Philly O's is the best in the north country.
So, so is breakfast, but I don't know, it's my turn to vibe this year.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Oh, I didn't get seconded.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so we'll be back with this. Get numbers, get people, get stuff set in before the twenty-ninth of September.
Yeah, I'm gonna second it, they are, they're ready to go again.
I think you all have pamphlets, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Trusty Trembling.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett. Aye. Trusty Trembling.
Aye.
Trusty McFettrich.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
See if you can wait.
I was waiting.
Okay, we have a request for Juanita and Mary to attend the Nikon Paul Training School. This was an every other year event, we would send them to either Saratoga or Lake Placid for the Nikon Training School. Last year was the year that they were up, for whatever reason, they did not go. So we would like to send them, or I would like to send them this year to the Nikon Training School in Saratoga on September eleventh.
To the fifteenth.
Okay, to the fifteenth.
Why do they choose such expensive places to hold it?
Well, it's either there or what's the?
It's a little getaway.
It's either there or Lake Placid, those are the places they have. Two of the most expensive places.
They get Nikon, gets to stay for free.
And just a morning session.
It's just crazy.
Beautiful places to go.
It's three full days.
I make a motion that we send Juanita and Mary to the training, Nikon training.
Okay, the amount is two thousand one hundred. Okay, the amount is two thousand one hundred and six dollars.
In the amount of two thousand one hundred and six dollars.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll have a roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Merg.
Aye. Now, this brings up the next thing with the Nikon Training School. We want to change the September board meeting date. Right now, it is set on the 11th.
Tom and I will not be here for the September board meeting.
For the 11th?
Right.
Alright, so let's have a motion to change it to the 18th.
We will not be here for the 18th either.
Man.
Sorry.
Well, we can't go any later than the 18th. Because that would create an issue with the next month.
Well, we, we can have it on the 18th and we'll still have a quorum.
Yeah, as long as the three of you are. Yeah, we won't.
You okay with that?
I don't know. I think so. I don't know, somewhere I'm on a vacation.
Well, we could move it back to the, whatever the, the fourth, but that's Labor Day.
That's Labor Day.
Yeah, I won't be here.
And we could go...
We would have to like...
We won't be here either.
I, I think I, I can do the 18th, I'm pretty positive.
Okay, let's, let's do that. If we need to make a change, we'll make change happen. When do you, when will you be back?
The 19th, right?
Yeah.
Well, if we go...
Maybe.
Well, if we need to go the 20th or something, we can, we can adjust with that.
No, I, I think that he's on town again, so I don't think it's my vacation week.
Alright, so we'll have a quorum.
So it's the 18th.
So we'll change, have a motion to change?
Yeah.
Second?
So I'll vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I penciled in a couple things here, I'm sorry. Energy audit, we had a energy audit that was done by NISIG. Sent a person up to do an energy audit and what they found, or what this person found in his quick walk through the buildings here. Both the wastewater plant, this building, and the, and the water plant, which I don't know how he estimated, but nonetheless. Were there potential savings here of, potential savings of...
Fifty-two percent savings.
Yeah, you see, the total cost is twelve hundred for that one, and total project cost is seventy-three. NISIG contribution was thirteen and about eighteen hundred dollars. So our contribution would be fifty-nine and about six thousand dollars. This is to me...
Isn't it just light fixtures we're talking?
We are not committed to this.
No, we're not committed to that.
We are not committed to this. To me, if we can make this money and do it ourselves using these suggestions, I think that would be the way that I would recommend that we go.
Yeah.
If we can realize these savings by, you know, by our contribu-, or...
Changing the...
Our contributions.
Right.
Yeah, they pretty much told you what to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that's just an awareness, just to let you know.
They say anything about our, our streetlights saving on that?
Oh, boy.
Janet and I went to a...
A four-hour workshop.
Four hour...
On streetlights.
Yeah. Last week.
She was all on those streetlights?
Was it lightning?
It was lightning. The first thing is, I, I went to the person that was the speaker and I said, "This better not be a four-hour sales pitch, because I'm leaving if it is." He said, "Oh, no, 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 you'll be glad you stayed to this." And I don't know how Janet feels, but I think at the end, I was a whole lot more comfortable with the idea that we should take these, we should take ownership of these streetlights here in this village. And there was one program, there was one program that would actually, you set it up and you took your savings. You took your savings and you paid for the streetlights. And this way, I mean, your choices, you could buy the arm and, you know, buy the arm and the light, or you can still rent a pole. I think the poles here were six dollars a month, something like that, which is nothing. But when you get the arm, I don't know what they call it. The arm anyway, and the ball, then you get to change the ball. Right now, it's up to...
You're four hours and you didn't learn what it was called?
I'm a slow, I just...
You don't school too long, Greg.
I'm telling you, it was, it was pretty technical.
I should've studied our...
It was good, it was very, very well designed.
Don't go with...
Like, I wouldn't need to read them.
Uh, the technology, the technology, and there were four or five different options in which we could acquire these. But it's still, NISIG so far has not approved, and if I'm wrong here, has not approved this, the sale to the municipalities. That should be something, the small ones.
Small ones.
I mean, we're...
It's coming.
We're a hundred. And just a little, maybe ninety-nine or ninety-eight streetlights. It's coming, and I think the savings would be significant. But that's where this is, and I have the literature here, if you wish, I'll make copies of it.
Greg, just, should you mention about the county, about the mega?
Yes. As part of this shared services thing dictated by our governor, one of the things that's being considered, as well as the dissolution of the Russell's Point Police Department and the Sheriff's Department picking up that duty, as well as the key name enforcement duty. The sheriff, or Mike Zerlo, asked that we get involved with a mega, which is Municipal Electric Something Association. The county's involved, and they buy all their power from this mega group. It's like these buying groups that we look at, Ambit and Fast. But the county gets all their power, Serenac gets all their power. And what Mike's request was that we contact this person and see if there is any savings for us. To give them our information, our numbers, our information, what we're paying now through NISIG, and see if there is any savings that we could have. And this too can be applied to the shared services program, which is a one-time reimbursement from the state if they allocate the funds for it. So, Juanita talked to the lady, we should get a report on that back. We have to, we have to deal with that probably before the September 18th board meeting. We can, we can, we can look at that, and I'll send you the figures when they come in. Alright, so. You forgot to mention, Janet, but the decharging stations are here, they're in the box in here. So we can get those in. That will qualify us, that will be our fourth, our fourth chore, so to speak. And that will qualify us for the fifty thousand dollar grant for the blowers that we can use towards the blowers. We had to get all four of those things accomplished.
Qualify us to apply for it.
Apply for it, but...
Well, we're right in the pipeline to get it if, if we get it in and no one gets it first.
I think there's, there was what, fourteen awards left for our area. There were four hundred thousand dollar ones, eighteen altogether, right?
Yeah.
Four hundred thousand dollar ones that we were a little late on because of this. And then the rest were fifty thousand dollar grants, which will help to offset, and I'll address that in just a moment.
We have to take a picture of it installed in order to fulfill it.
How are we getting it installed?
We are going to, Mike is going to dig the trench around the line, and they are supposed to send two technicians from California or someplace as part of the purchase price, from California to make sure that they are hooked up correctly and are cooperating.
When are you able to do that?
Concrete be put in for, for a pedestal or anything like that?
I haven't even looked at him yet.
Yes, there will have to be a concrete pedestal put in.
No problem, yeah.
That's the in-kind service that we...
Yeah, no, that's why I was asking, is like, he's unable and computer beeps, so.
Okay, under all business, if that's, if I can move ahead here. Under all business, we have addressed number one. Number two, the signage for vehicles. I remember at one meeting, some of you wanted to see the material that was available. This is the, that is the, the material that's high-grade, I guess.
From who? Who's this from?
La Valley, La Valley Vinyl Design, Route 11, Champlain.
I said at the last meeting, I think by looking at this, you know, kind of, I, I really don't, it's not just thickness. I, I hope it is high-grade if we, wherever we go.
Actually, Janet looked it up, didn't you Google it here?
Yeah.
But I mean, I don't think looking at it is gonna tell us anything.
Well, it would have to be applied. So we have the, we did have the cost estimates on this?
Hold up.
Yes, we have, I have.
Yes, we did.
It was, La Valley Vinyl was five hundred and thirty dollars. And JP Signs...
It was actually seven hundred fifteen minus the DA tax.
Yeah, she put tax on, but, so seven fifteen, so it was a difference of a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay. In the favor of...
Eight-year outdoor license.
What's that?
In the favor of La Valley or...
In the favor of La Valley. He was five thirty, she was seven fifteen.
Five hundred and thirty?
What'd you find when you looked up for a cow?
We looked up, it said HP, I prefer, yeah, or paint. For those kinds of things. So I didn't know anymore, it's not...
I know. No, no, that's what I mean, there's nobody, and did Jess bring a sample or provide information?
You said you were bringing one.
Yeah, she was supposed to stop by.
Nope.
No, I haven't seen her.
The town uses the ones Jess provides, and they've never had an issue with them.
I know, I know, that's why I say I've used them for years too, and I've never had an issue. I mean, if I've got graphics in my camp...
No, that's installed.
That's installed.
I'm twenty years old, but thirteen...
That's a hundred dollars different, right?
Hundred eighty-five.
Oh, a hundred eighty-five. I just wonder if they're using the same thing.
Well, that's it, I mean, we, we know the, the quality of, of JP Signs.
Yeah, I, I guess that I really don't know, because it's usually not that thick, you know? So it's hard to say. It, it's more to it than the thickness, because it's how it withstands the UV and the sun.
And the cold and the sun.
That's what's critical.
Salt.
So it doesn't crack, you know? I don't know. I guess what we need to decide is, we need to get a motion on the floor.
I make, I make a motion.
What's the difference, a hundred seventy-eight dollars?
Hundred eighty-five.
A hundred eighty-five dollars.
Well, if you give somebody that you're sure that it's good and you know...
Well, we don't know if it's any different. Like, we don't know what her sample is.
Oh, so she hasn't provided it?
No, so I mean, I don't want to spend an extra hundred eighty-five if it ends up to be the same.
Exactly.
If we want to get this done, let's make the motion for the five hundred and thirty and see what we get.
Unless, you know, you can get her to come in and show us that it's different and thicker or stands up better, I don't know, I don't understand why we...
No, I asked, when I talked to her about it, she was very adamant that it's not the thickness in the materials, because it's just the grade of the material. And I said, "Could you provide us with the specs in the material then?" Because the board requested to look at it. And so she leaves, provided the specs, but I'm not sure why she didn't drop it off.
She didn't know.
I told her, we just need it before the next board meeting. I guess it's three weeks ago I spoke for there. I don't know, we go either way.
Well, I make a motion to go with La Valley Vinyl Designs for five hundred and thirty dollars for the graphics on all the vehicles.
And that's just, wordage? No design?
Well...
He, he did those...
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's the graphics.
It's on the same blank, so if you wanted to change something different, it would be the same price.
Sure.
Right.
It was whatever you want, he just provided that, all you have an option to show you, you know, give you an idea, that's all.
I like this font.
So you like the top one?
That eighteen, I like the, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I like the, the curvature, I think it's sharp. I think the eighteen seventy-three is just way too big. Because I like the way this is on the bottom here. I like this font better.
I, I like the top one, I get what you're saying about the eighteen seventy-three, maybe you could just calm it down a tad, but...
Yeah, I just, I think this is sharp, though.
Because the eighteen seventy-three outweighs the Village of Champlain.
Yeah.
When you look at the sun.
Smaller, and you can put the incorporated in underneath it.
Or...
You know, above it or underneath it.
Something smaller, but I...
Because eighteen seventy-three was smaller.
I think the curvature and that font is sharp, it's, it's gonna, rather than just this, it stands out more.
Okay, we do that.
Yeah, he, he...
Yeah.
Whatever you want, he'll design, it's not, that's...
So you got the, you got the Village of Champlain incorporated in, eighteen seventy-three and smaller.
And if you want to pick up something, he can do it and create anything, this is what you want, if not changing it.
So basically, just make that smaller, the eighteen seventy-three.
I would assume we're doing black lettering?
Yeah.
Do whatever color, any color you want, you can, you can do it and have it outlined in a separate color.
Well, I would, I would suggest that, Alan, I was gonna say is, I mean, assuming we're doing black because of the yellow equipment, I don't think we'd want to get into...
Fancy colors.
A couple of trucks being different.
Yeah, whatever color you want, they can be different, they can be however you want them. The vinyl price is vinyl price, or, you know what I mean, square, so many square feet this way and then, you know, with the...
And Jess was the same way, she said, "Whatever you want, put it, doesn't matter." So I would suggest black, black lettering with a, maybe a silver border or a gray border, maybe a dark gray border, so it shows up on a silver truck.
Would I change the price to order it?
No, no, the same price, I mean, either way. And like I say, those designs, he just made to give you an idea or show you. That's not a set of stone, you can have any design you want. Just kind of do that to show as an example.
Right, and have him sign us a proof before he, before it goes to print.
This one, with this, the eighteen seventy-three, just smaller.
We offered the company a proof, but it's... Because the top one is, the number's small.
Yeah.
Alright, we're all in agreement?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Merg.
Aye. Office renovations, I haven't heard from AES recently. Blowers, I haven't heard from AES. The other contractor, or the other engineer that we've been talking to is, uh... He's quite a bit more energetic and moving forward, and he did, he did send in a grant and did all the work on the grant, but basically the grant was for, was for engineering services. So he's putting in a grant pro bono, if we hire him to pay for his... So that's the way it works. Alright, so two officer renovations and blowers will call on and see what's, see where they are. And the final thing I have is, I think we talked about sidewalks last time. I'd like to, I'd like to get some estimation and some location as to where we need to replace the sidewalks, or where we want to replace the sidewalks this year. Put it out to bid, because we can only do this in, this is September, October, by November latest. And even if we do some, pick a street. Pick a street, do a thousand feet, or do whatever we can, whatever's measured off. But at least we get a start, and then we can go from there. There are some streets here that sorely need some attention, but there are also some streets that is gonna take some planning and some cajoling and some pleading to some degree to get them done. And I think we all know what that Oak Street situation is on that end of the world. So if we can come up with a suggestion by the next meeting?
Well, there's definitely creative things I've seen people do with those situations.
So if we can come up with a suggestion by the next meeting?
You'll be, you guys will be...
You know, so that we can express this.
Yeah, I think prospect, leading into the nice walking path would be really important to hit.
Yeah, well, even if we only go up to...
Yes.
Up just past Alan Resin's house.
Yes.
That's basically where it is now, after that, it's like two foot wide.
Because I think we're gonna find, you put the four foot in there, Because I think we're gonna find, you put the four foot in there, you go above that, you take four foot, you're gonna, you're taking out a lot of people's yards.
But we do, right now, we do, we close up through.
Yeah, you're gonna, it's gonna need to be done, but I would say get the lower end first.
I agree on prospect. The only other thing I want to mention though is, um, one person did stop me and that, where Maple Street comes into Oak, both sidewalks on either side of the street are kind of tipped. So he's worried about the sidewalk plow because it's.
Oh, next to the dog station or on the other?
Yeah, the dog station one, and then when you cross over, they're both kind of like at angles like this.
That whole street is dangerous.
It's, I don't know if that's.
There's gonna be, uh, there at some point is gonna be culvert on, on the end. Walkers wanted to buy their own culvert.
Oh, okay.
That first strip.
Yeah, okay.
But that was supposed to be done in the last two years and just haven't been doing.
All right.
So he wants to put, he wants to buy his own culvert and have us put it in the front there.
All right.
In that first strip because we went up a few times, the sidewalk machine there. Almost rolled it over, it's so deep.
Yeah.
It's dangerous there.
Yeah, and that's what was mentioned.
So once it gets filled on the end, then there's not an issue, but that's, he's got a drainage tile that goes under there. And the other side's pretty narrow too, you gotta hit it this right, and you'll end up.
Yeah.
Down in the bottom.
So I did wanna, did want to mention that.
It's narrow.
But prospective definitely needs, well, for the begin, I mean.
Well, you're seeing a lot more people walking that now with that path, it's nice to see.
Well, I, I'm in favor of, yeah, you gotta, you gotta pick a place to start.
Yeah.
And prospects is good places anyway, and I do agree with Greg, I think Oak Street, I think Oak Street is going to require a lot of consideration and it's going to be a lot more money and a lot more work.
A lot of planning there.
I mean, those sidewalks, I rode my bike on those sidewalks when I was a kid, all the way up to the border and back and nothing's been done to them and. Many years. Many years.
Can we agree to start on Prospect?
Because it's the board's choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, start Prospect.
We'll get the, we'll get the RFP developed and out and we'll get that started.
I think you should come straight down on the end, not like it is though.
Yeah.
Because every, you never, you never hit it with the sidewalk machine, you always tear inside.
Yeah, I'm cut.
Well, we're here, let's plant the seed in your minds, sidewalk machine.
Yes.
We need to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
A new one.
Yeah, we need one.
I mean, they have them with state contract bid pricing, so we can, we can go that route as long as they have the equipment that we want. I don't know, unless you prefer to go the used machine.
I guess we can find the state contract, I brought samples last time, we stopped at the city plant, or town plant.
Well. Can we get those figures for the next board meeting?
I'll try to, yeah.